We're going to call this meeting to order. Can everyone please stand for their pledge? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. This is the October-November third meeting for the zoning board. I have to apologize, the chairman is not here tonight due to family emergency. And I was one, I am one of the board members that was not here last month, but I am a regular member of the board, taking over the position to carry forward. We have one public hearing that is still open for Greenhaven Road Community Solar System that we're going to look at again and try to finalize tonight. Would the Greenhaven community come up?
Sure.
Yes?
Sure. My name is Terrence Nolan. I'm with New Leaf Energy, who is the project sponsor for the Greenhaven Solar Project. It's your last meeting. Mr. Parker? Sorry, Mr. Parker. No, I just want, this is what, there's something in. Good. Terrence Nolan with New Leaf Energy, and we're the project sponsor, project developer for the Greenhaven Solar Development Site. Last month, we didn't, we had a map that didn't clearly show, so we really now are showing where the panels are in relationship to the area variance request that we're seeking, which is along the back line of the property, which is part of an effort to pull the system away from, you know, the front area height from view and locate it towards the, towards the back. And this system size, which is smaller than the normal five-megawatt system size that we would typically pursue, it's just approximately three megawatts. So what we're trying to do is, and we've been in front of the planning board actually for, I think we're going on over a year now, having most recently gotten a negative declaration on Seeker and closed the public hearing there after a lot of testimony. Now we're here seeking relief, asking for variance on the setback requirement, which would allow us to accommodate some of the other aspects of the visual concerns for the project overall and maintain that system size instead of trying to locate the panels closer to the road where we could theoretically do that. But this is an allowable use in the zone. I'm here with our council, Kyle Parks from Hodgson and Russ. I'm here with the landlord's son and a resident of the property, Jay Dixon. So, yeah, we, we had a, there was public discussion at the last meeting, and we are prepared to answer any additional questions, but this is an essential thing for us in order to proceed with the project, so we're seeking the zoning board's.
Can you, can you just go over it for me, because I couldn't hear very well on the recording, the setbacks, exactly where they are on the property lines?
Sure.
And quantities?
So I believe you have the specific in the, on the agenda tonight, you have the specific setback variance request as identified in the, on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
So, and I don't have my civil engineer with me tonight, so I apologize.
It's okay.
But to give you a, if you're looking at this map... Yeah, if you're looking at this map?
Yes.
So this is Greenhaven Road.
Yeah.
South Greenhaven Road.
Mm-hmm.
The entrance would come off of South Greenhaven Road, be located in these two fields toward the back. So what we're looking for is a setback variance for this back, this line on the back of the property.
Okay.
And you can see, the white line here represents the setback.
Property line?
That white line represents the setback under the current code.
Okay.
And the yellow panels that extend over that represent the, so what would be the variance request, which I, I'm sorry, I can't quote the numbers, I believe it's on your gen, uh...
Yes.
Okay. It's eighty-one.
It is.
Eighty-one, sixty-nine-foot variance.
Gotcha. So that's, that's what we're seeking here. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Where, where exactly is the, so just tell me, where, where's the rail trail according to?
It's up.
Is it, is it off to the left?
No, it's up further.
It's up further?
Up further on Greenhaven and to the right.
Okay.
It's up at the top of it.
Maybe above that.
So it's, it's at the top, okay.
Top and right.
That's about the south direction.
So on the other side of that yellow is another field, obviously?
Yes.
And that's not, okay.
It's a hundred yards from that big green field where it's planted, also.
Okay.
If I could add, we, we went through quite a bit of conversation with the neighbors about visual screening concerns.
Mm-hmm.
And so we have a, and in fact, I met with the neighbor, neighbors DITRON today, which has this structure right here, and we have a pretty vigorous planting proposal. It's shown on this plan and green along the boundary with DITRON. We agreed today. We will clarify when we go back to the planning board that we'll be looking at adding these be twelve-foot-high evergreens that will go in along the parking area. Yes?
Evergreens get more green on the top and end up dying on the bottom, most of the time.
We will, yeah, we'll pick a, we'll, we'll deal, you know, the concern is, depending on which evergreen I'm getting.
Depending on which one, like if you're doing a Colorado Blue Sues.
I'm not a horticulturist either, or an arborist.
I'm just saying, depending on what evergreen you're using?
Right.
A lot of them do die on the bottom, which means there'll be nothing else, there's no blocking.
Yeah, so we have a landscape plan in front of the planning board, and we'll make whatever combinations we have to, you know, to address any of those issues in connection with that. We also have planting proposed along this inch of the property as well, and then just to deal with any additional, you know, just really not much visibility from Greenhaven, but we are proposing some planting over here as well.
Okay. Now, how will this connect to the, I guess, I'm assuming it's going to connect to the power grid?
Yes.
How will it connect in terms of what kind of structure, the, you know, appearance-wise? Are there going to be power lines, or is it going to be underground, connects to the grid, or towers?
Yep, there will be a, so what we have is, we've entered into it in a connection agreement with NICE, so we have that established, which means that, you know, we have the capacity reserved on the substation and on the feeder, and we've paid the full interconnection cost as of now. And we will have underground wires that will take, that will come to a set of poles that will be at the point of interconnection, which is going to be on the street, where there's three, three phases located there, so we'll feed straight into the distribution system.
Okay. So there won't be overhead wires or anything like that?
Well, there'll be, the wires will be underground conduits until they come to the poles, and then there'll be some poles which are part of the NICE utility requirement, which will be located near the, near Greenhaven.
How many poles?
I believe there's five.
And?
But that's in our plans that have been in front of the planning board. And I should say, the planning board held the public hearing open for, let's say, seven months.
Wow.
It was ultimately closed after a lot of testimony on all the elements. And so this is sort of embedded in that regard with, in public hearing.
And did they make the variance as part of going forward, in order to go forward?
Planning board issue, the town attorney can confirm that.
So the, the planning board left open the issue of the variance. Obviously, that's within your purview. So in order for the planning board to proceed, they are going to need a decision, you know, from us. From you. And then they can craft the rest of their conditions to their planning board on the site plan and special use permit.
I think most of the questions, we'll, we'll open the hearing for the public to ask questions.
If there's any more background that you need from the applicant before you open the public?
I do, I have a question. I have one more question.
Sure.
I know you, you spoke to some, because there's two major companies over there other than Greenhaven, there's the lumber company and whatever other company it is. What is it?
Dec-Trot.
Dec-Trot, yeah. Did you talk to residents that live there, other than just those two companies?
Well, Mr. Klein has been attending, attending all.
No, but I mean residents, other than the client. Have you spoken to other people that live around that, other than just the companies?
Sure, we've been, so we have done a couple of things. One is that we, as I mentioned, the public hearing was noticed at the planning board and went on for months. That was number one. Number two, in the course of those meetings, members of the neighbors came, and there was a lot of kind of dialogue that took place publicly, and a lot of changes to the plan as a result of that, including a lot of discussion about tree cutting and tree planting, and where we were doing all of that. Separate from that, we have, and I have a folder with the certified mailing notification for the butters for tonight. So there's been that mailing, and the newspaper article on the Poughkeepsie Journal. And then we had the meeting last week, month, and then we met today, and I'm sure they'll have maybe something to add with the DITRON photos.
Thank you.
I just want to, if I could just, just to summarize, all of the aspects of this project that have been discussed with the planning board are still in some sense, you know, this is not a done plan, it's gotten fairly close to being done, it was only after having met the, a lot of the concerns and conditions that came up in that process that we were able even come to the zoning board, because it was only after this plan that they finally issued a negative declaration on Seeker and closed the public hearing. And really now, we're talking about, for the zoning board, really the narrow consideration, the limited and the narrow consideration of this particular setback. So just because I can, and I, we will have to go back to the planning board again pending the ZBA's decision, but it, there's a, a lot of the issues that come up about the site overall have, have been discussed and have been in front of the forum at the planning board, and again, this is really about this particular issue, just because I know it's helpful to focus on that particular aspect. That's really my summary. Thank you. Yes?
I think I asked the last time, but I'd like to re-ask the question if this is for those who are not here. What made you decide this particular town and choose that particular parcel? I'm just wondering.
Sure, I mean, there were, there were really two considerations. One is that the town has an existing solar bylaw that allows solar in this, in this zone. Two, there is available capacity on the, on the feeder and on the substation. And three, this, in the course of reaching out to potential landowners, this landowner connected with us and was interested in doing that. So it's those three things combined.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. But thank you for your consideration, it's vital, this, this variance request is vital to our ability to proceed with a, with the location of these panels away from the road and at this size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to open it for the residents, if anyone wants to come up and express an opinion. Again, before we close it, we welcome any resident that needs to express their opinion. Can you please state your name and, and residence?
Yes, my name is Robert Lusardi. I'm an attorney with the firm of Daniels, Porco and Lusardi in Carmel, New York. We represent DITRON, which is a neighboring property owner to this property. I wanted to just say initially that DITRON is not taking a position with respect to this particular application, will accept whatever determination this board makes. We did however, want to bring one thing to this board's attention that we feel it should know, as well as to the town attorney. There is a condition that's still open with respect to the subdivision, with respect to the site plan, application before the planning board, and that is, has to do with drainage easement. There's a drainage pipe running from the DITRON property into a stream on the subject property, and this electric line in question has to run underneath that drainage easement. We have not, it's a requirement of the planning board that that issue be resolved, it has not yet been resolved. I think it's fair to say that the applicant, New Leaf, has, we've resolved with them any issues, but we have not resolved with the property owner, Ms. Dixon, the issue of that, of that easement. Otherwise, we believe we've worked out the issues that we had with the applicant.
The applicant, that's not the current owner? They resolved it with the applicant and not the current owner?
Well, the applicant is proceeding on the current owner's consent. They have the consent of the current owner. So that, that particular aspect is a planning board decision, and it's a condition, which is for background only and not for your consideration on the factors for the ZBA variance.
Okay. Sorry.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Klein, I've been representing my mother for the family farm 159, South Greenhaven Road. In particular, I just, at last, the last meeting, very graciously, it was explained to me what the clearing was on the south end on our property line, and apparently there's going to be no trees cut, with the exception of seven trees that are on the west end of that south border. So I'd just like a clarification, if that's the final, final plan, because we've been through a number of iterations, and I went down to the border today, and I looked, and I believe you said that the pink ribbons are trees to be cleared, and the orange are the surveyor markers, but there's pink and orange intermixed, there's pink and orange on the same tree, on the same vegetation. So I just wanted clarification on the clearing plan, because in the spirit of Murphy's Law, have you ever heard of it?
Madam Chairperson?
Given the opportunity for something to go wrong, that will go wrong. So it's very confusing, and I, and I know that a lot of those ribbons were put down there due to maybe one or two or three iterations ago of the clearing, clearing plan. So my question would be, one, to give some confidence to the Klein farm, that what I just said is the clearing plan, and then how do we not have a Murphy's Law discussion when the, if the contractor says, yeah, I went down there and I just cut everything that had reddish ribbon on it? It just looks confusing to me. Fair?
As your legal advisor, I can tell you that that particular aspect of this particular plan, his question, is actually for the planning board's consideration, and it's been the topic of a lot of discussion there. So you can encourage him to appear for the next planning board hea, you know, hearing on that.
I hear you, and I understand exactly what you're saying about Murphy's Law too, and all those tags being up, and they will be, you know, problems for people that go cutting. I would suggest you, you know, address it to the planning board, because they're going to finally revisit them before they get any approvals from the planning board, they're going to be back in the planning board. Yes?
Yeah, now just, I appreciate, just for the benefit of the comment that's being brought up.
Right.
So we met today with, again, as I mentioned, we met with the principals of DITRON, because one of the questions that they had had to do with the same type of thing about clearing. So I'm going to just say to Mr. Klein, I'll meet with him, I think we should meet and look at it and get clarity on exactly what's getting cut and what's not. There was an effort made to, there was an effort made by our surveyor to mark the boundary with certain color of ribbons, and then to put ribbons around certain trees, to just make sure it was clear which ones are getting cut, which ones weren't.
As you understand, that's a, you know, that could be a problem.
Yes.
So I think definitely we should address it with the planning board before approvals are done.
We'll do that.
And clean, and some, the site should be cleaned up. It's not for us to demand it. We can't even demand it.
But in the interest of overall approval of the project, I have no problem doing that. And Mr. Klein, we should, as I did today, I initialed a plan that said what was going to be cut and what wasn't, and I think we can have that conversation as well at any time that's convenient. So why don't I just give you my contact, and we'll do that.
Can you please mention, what I articulate is, is from our conversation at the beginning of the meeting last month.
Right, so.
Those were the cuts, except for seven trees down on the west end of the south line near the blue pond, is that still captured?
I can't give you that, and the reason that I can't is because at the last meeting, beginning of the last meeting, we have, so those trees were marked prior to that, and there's going to change, which the planning board will consider at the next meeting, and that's a submission that the planning board is going to review, and that is going to represent a change. So it may very well involve me going back out to remove certain ribbons and clarify which ones are being cut, but I can confirm based on our conversation that we are cutting less trees because we are pulling back from that area. So I'm going to, it's a planning board matter, it's a matter, as a good neighbor, that we would like to resolve.
Anyone else wants to say anything? Then I call this adjournment.
Well, you would move, the board would now move to close the public hearing.
Close the, the public hearing, and board members.
Is your second?
Second.
Second closing.
Okay, so who's the secretary? So the motion was brought by, who's moving?
I adjourned it.
You adjourned it, I seconded it.
Linda.
Linda.
Porter. Linda, yeah. So the motion was made. I prepared a resolution, if you want to read it into the record. Um, as far as the decision. Do you like to go around the table?
Yeah, I think we have to.
What are we doing?
To read it.
It's a pleasure of the board. Would you like to take a vote at this moment?
We're going to take a vote on, at this time for this.
Is there any questions before you deliberate?
No questions.
Any questions? Stella?
No, I don't have any questions, I just, just to go by some guidelines will change the character of the neighborhood, and I don't think it will, especially if the applicants are willing and prepared to add all those green shields, so that only the area with the panels is really the open area. And, you know, hopefully you would be more than willing to maintain it as needed, is that? I know it's probably from, right, right, from the planning board, but I just want to clarify that. And I did see, I did drive by, and I actually think that right now, the property is, you know, wild grown, if you will, and I think this would be an improvement, if anything, also in keeping with, with the clearing, the, of the property. So that was my only thing, I did see it, and I didn't think it would be detrimental at all.
All right, then we're ready for a vote. Take the vote.
Whatever we vote.
What do we vote? On the sixty-nine-foot variance?
Sixty, sixty-nine feet variance.
Okay, do we need to, do we need to consider something that is?
There's a resolution that's before the board, if you want to read it into the record, if, if that's something that, you should be going through the criteria one by one.
Yeah. The questions.
The criteria's are, are they in here?
Yeah, the five, the five criteria.
The five questions.
So you're all going to have to affirm that.
Area variance testing.
Can we also do that it's specific to this applicant?
No.
No?
No, that's not.
So you just read them out loud, and we all decide?
It's good enough.
I see them here in the resolution. Okay. So the questions are starting down here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Did you take my glasses?
No.
I didn't take anything.
Okay.
Much better.
All righty. An undesirable change will not be produced in the character of the neighborhood, as properties were, with commercial, industrial, and institutional uses are also located within this zone. The project appears to be mitigated with landscaping buffers, burrows, and as well as a hundred-and-foot, a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback. The project appears to be mitigated with landscaping buffers, burrows, and as well as a hundred and foot, a hundred and fifty-foot setback on the portions of the properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicants can be achieved by other means feasible for the applicant to pursue or other than the area variance. The applicant has reconfigured the layouts of the solar panels so in which, in such a way that the minimum twenty feet for separations between the solar panels and the, and the fences. The layout remains the setback requirements for all exterior properties lying and seeks to limit the clearing of vegetations and brush within the interior limits. There is no feasible way for applicant to remove, to move forward with their plans without this variance. C, whether the request of the variance is substantial. The request of sixty-nine feet deviation from a hundred and fifty setback require, requirements may be considerable substantials, given the reduction of the setback of eighty-one feet. However, the applicant is limiting clearing and environmental distress by moving for this variance. D, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The applicant appears to be taking a number of measures to avoid impact to floor, FUMA, wetlands, and flood plains. Applicants have provided an EAF to planning board detail environmental impact. Applicants also will be providing security fencing and additional landscaping as buffer between surrounding areas as they have spoken to all property owners that are meeting around them.
They're not doing fencing. They're not putting up fences.
But they're doing trees, trees and fencing. They've come to terms. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but not necessary precluding the granting of this variance. The alleged hardship is not self-created as the applicant requested, as other solar panel layouts would require additional variances that may affect setbacks on additional portions of the property, as well as clearing additional vegetation. The applicant has noted that they are using the minimum size solar panels to get their numbers of making it feasible for them to go into the grid. So, area variance of sixty-nine feet setback and the C-three setback requirements. We'll take a vote, starting with Ed.
I'm in favor.
Yay. Linda?
No.
Stella?
Yes.
Me? I have concerns, but the applicant is meeting all other requirements that the board is looking for as far as vegetation, tree placements, and setbacks from the road. So with the, with the residents and what I saw around the neighborhood of other, other industrial site and prison, as far as, as the panels are in the back of the property and not go for, and not forward. Yes.
So at this point in time, is there a, a motion to adopt the resolution as written and a decision? And are, are you going to direct the plan, the zoning department to send that decision to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
At this time.
So there's a roll call vote. It was three one.
Three one.
The only, no vote was Linda. Okay. Just note that. You got that?
Yes.
All right, so I'll take that afterward.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion to-
A motion to accept the variance granted for sixty-nine feet for Borch Solar System is granted.
What else did you say?
You can move to terminate the meeting.
Okay. Is granted and finalized from the zoning board. Thank you.
Is there a motion to end the meeting?
Motion to end the meeting also. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Motion to grant?
This is not correct.
Motion path to end the meeting.